Mr. Demay, please call roll.
Councilor Moore?
Here.
Councilor Bocha?
Here.
Councilor DuBois?
Here.
Councilor Flath?
Here.
Mayor Amel?
Here. This time seeking approval and/or adjustments to the current agenda as written.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This time, are there any conflict of interest declarations need to be made by members of council? Hearing none. This time, we will hear brief public comment on agenda items. If you wish to make a comment, please approach the podium, state your name, place of residence, keep your comments to three minutes or less. Hearing none. We have no public hearings scheduled, no unfinished business. Moving on to new business, item number one, interviews, city manager position. City council will interview for the city manager position. Got that part. At this time, as we have not established a firm structure, I will seek guidance from council. That's how we would like to proceed.
My recommendation would let Jim open up to informal opening, introduce himself, kind of talk a little bit about himself first, and then lead to questions.
Sure. As far as the length of the interview, do we want to go by a certain number of questions? Do we want to drill him for two hours?
Preferably not.
Do we want to set a time limit, I guess is what I'm wondering.
Do we need to, do we have, do you feel inclined that we're going to have a massive amount of questions?
I brought a dozen, just in case there's some overlapping.
Okay, so you get four minutes?
I don't have to ask them all, but...
I think, Mr. Mayor, if you just go through each council member and say, Karen, do you have a question to start off? And then, Mr. Bocha and so on, maybe do it that way, and just keep going around.
We'll do that.
Sure.
Fair enough. Mr. McNeil, you have the floor.
Okay, I won't take too long with this. I'm sure you all read my cover letter and resume. From Esconaba, I started with the city in the summer of 2018 as an intern, one of our few paid interns, and that arrangement really blossomed. There were some good relationships that were established. I started as the assistant assessor in January 2019, and became the city assessor, I believe it was September of 2019. And I've been involved in a number of projects during that time, whether it's with the North Shore development, if it's lending an ear and giving what help I can to budgets or to infrastructure projects. It's always a collaborative effort around here, and I feel that, kind of as you discussed, how you wanted to go about your search, I think you got it right, that having somebody internal, you can hit the ground running. We're coming into this budget, we're in the middle of major projects, and I do feel that I'll be able to take that baton and not stumble. I think we can keep moving forward and not waste a whole lot of time. And with that, I'll open to your questions.
You want me to start?
I do.
First of all, that is the most impressive resume I have ever read, ever. And so, I'm extremely impressed with you, not only from your resume, but from what you have done so far in your little trial, if you will. Just working with you is just working with you is kind of a confirmation of why I think that you should have this job. But I do have one question. You mentioned to me that you would like to combine jobs, that you could do both the assessor job and the city manager job. So I would like to you to describe in a little bit more detail how you plan to do that.
Sure. So I think there's a few good reasons for doing it. One, it's a good budget move. I think it probably saves somewhere around $75,000 a year. And if I'm going to ask other departments to consider working, putting more load on their people, I think I should do the same. It's only fair, and I think it's a little bit easier for them to accept that. But as far as the functionality of it, I think it's very achievable. With the staff we have, I look back to the arrangement when I came on board. Kevin DuBois was the assistant assessor, and for a while, he was in the office by himself. And the county was under contract to provide us the supervision of the assessment role. They'd come in once or twice a year for a day to clean things up, do the work they needed to do. And I think the most important part is they were a resource on, you know, what do we do with this issue, in this issue? And I think being here every day, I'll still be able to do the high-level work, the reporting, the studies, and be that resource. We have a good assistant assessor. We have other support staff that can take on some clerical duties, entering deeds, sales, principal residence exemptions, and I'm pretty confident that the arrangement would work just fine.
Mr. Bocha?
That is similar to one of my questions that I had here. I'll read you my question, but seeing as how you've already answered it in one form, I'm going to... My original question was, assuming you were to become the city manager, what are your plans for assisting the city council in locating a new assessor? And how long do you estimate it would take to fill the assessor position? But if I heard you correctly, you're planning to do both jobs for whatever pay? And you estimate, if I heard you correctly, you'd be saving the city $75,000?
That'd be my rough estimate.
Today, it's dollars, obviously, but...
Right.
I guess my question to you then, and I think I've mentioned this to you in the past, do you feel as though there would be a conflict of interest at times between having information given to you as the city assessor and having that same information when making city manager decisions? I'm not sure if, I haven't researched it.
I'm not aware of, I did review a couple months ago, and I reviewed several years ago. There's a public act about the incompatibility of offices. I don't see it as a conflict. As having been the assessor for a while and now serving in the interim role, I don't see of any information that could be misused. I think when you have, if you had an assessor who was also the controller, or an assessor that was the treasurer, or a treasurer that was the controller, and, you know, somebody that would send the bill and pay the bill, that's where you could run into conflicts. But in this case, I can't think of anything. And would a manager selfishly want to see tax revenues go up and raise assessments? I wouldn't do that. Would one without scruples try? I, perhaps, but everybody gets their assessment notice, and it could appeal if they felt it was not just to, but, you know, that would be the only problem that I guess that I could see, but it's not something that I would do.
Well, then, if I may ask a follow-up question, getting back to my original question, assuming this council would be willing to let you fulfill both positions, provided we get some sort of clarification or approval, whether it's the state attorney general, someone that says that wouldn't be a problem, that would lead me, or would be a problem, getting back to my original question, if you were not allowed to serve in both positions, how long do you feel it would take for us to find a new assessor?
It would depend on the route you want to go. We do have another Level III in-house, so she would be qualified. Assessors are hard to find. I know that, I know there's still a shortage. Of course, I'd be willing to help, but if it was an external search, I really have no idea how long that would take. We searched for several years before I was hired, I know, and it's... Assessors are rare, they're very hard to find. But whatever the direction of council was with that, I certainly would help. And help them get acquainted with our systems, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Flath?
I don't have a lot. Can you tell me what your greatest strengths are and your greatest weaknesses? That you feel that you have?
I think my greatest strength would be my temperament. I generally don't get too high, and I don't get too low. I'm pretty even keel. I think I'm probably about as square as it gets. And as far as character and ethics, I feel very confident that I'm not somebody that can be corrupted or persuaded for wrong reasons. As far as the greatest weakness, I think going down that same path, I always test out as an ambivert when I do a personality test, where I'm an introvert and I'm an extrovert. And I think sometimes it's easy to get lost. I have the ability to do both, I feel like I'm more of an introvert by nature, but then when I have to get in front of people, I can speak. And, you know, attending social functions, I'll go, but it doesn't mean I'm the most comfortable person among a sea of people either. I don't like to be the center of attention, it's not my preference. And I guess the other thing is, I probably have a little bit of domain dependence, where I tend to look at things through a financial lens. And it's not that I stick to it. Of course, if it's an infrastructure project, I'm going to be more focused on the dollars and cents of it. But if an engineer says, well, you really need to include this design, and it's going to cost more, and here's the long-term benefit and the reason you need to do it, I'm willing to listen. And sometimes, there's intangible things, too, as far as the people behind things, too. And sometimes money and people can be a trade-off, especially when you have a budget issue. And I do feel I'm a good listener and willing to go to any length to meet with people and figure out what their needs are. But domain dependence, I think for any profession, can be an issue. And that's why you have to have a good staff and be willing to listen.
Mr. DuBois?
Jim, I want to thank you for stepping into the interim city manager and being willing to take that on for now. And then also your drive to apply for this position as a full-time city manager. I appreciate that greatly. Working with you directly since you've been put in this position, even prior working to that and working with you as the city assessor, you have done a well job with communication. I think your communication skills have greatly improved from our previous experiences, in my opinion. And I do appreciate the updates that you provide to us. Knowing this information that we get from you is very much appreciative. My one question for you is, how do you feel you'd be able to deal with department heads? And when a department head pushes back, can you handle telling them no?
I can. I've had to do it already. And my biggest thing is, if I'm telling somebody no, I hope they understand the place I'm coming from. That I never intend to be heavy-handed. I'm one who wants to be more hard on the business and soft on the people. And they know that I'm not going to say no without thinking about it. I'm not going to say no without looking at alternatives, at all the options. And at the end of the day, whatever the decision is, I can sleep at night, I can live with it, because it was well thought out, it was well vetted. So, yeah, I've worked with a lot of department heads. I think I've worked with all of them, some a lot, some quite a bit less. And we don't always agree. Oftentimes, we do. But at the end of the day, the best idea, the best thought is the one that gets presented. And you might not get along for five minutes, but you walk out of the meeting, and it's business as usual. So I think there's mutual respect, and that makes it a lot easier.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I just noticed Mr. McNeil does not have a microphone. Are you able to pick him up?
Yeah.
Oh, he does have one?
It's pinned out.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Thank you.
I don't have a question, but it's kind of a follow-up on what you just said about the department heads. I know for a fact, just from personal conversations, that the department heads support you. They absolutely support you. So that's huge to start out with. But I don't have any more questions.
Mr. Bocha?
You? No? None?
I like to wait.
Oh, okay.
There's no reason for me to ask any questions that you may already covered.
I see, all right. Most of my questions have two parts, so forgive me, I'll try and pick one out here that...
No multiple choice?
Has one, no, there are no multiple choice. Here's, what aspect of your background should lead council to believe you are capable of successfully managing 130 or 40 employees in nearly a $40 million budget?
Certainly, the budget is going to be more aligned with my education and my experience. My experience at the city has been mostly as the assessor, but I've had my fingers in a lot of projects in several departments. I have a lot of confidence when it comes to the financial component. We already have some ideas on how to address this issue and how to contain it to a shorter time period. So in that component, I'm very confident. In managing 130 employees, our organizational structure makes that a heck of a lot easier. We have department heads that run their departments. And I don't intend to micromanage, but at the same time, one management philosophy is to give, you give your departments what they need to operate, but then you audit, too. And what, how are you actually putting these resources to use? And is it too much, is it too little? I don't know if we've ever used key performance indicators, but is there something measurable that we could take a look at? I think there's a lot of rooms for improvement, a lot of room for improvement in measurement of what we do. So certainly, when it comes to a lot of city staff, I'm going to rely on their supervisors to manage them. To me, a lot of managing people is your relationship. And one thing going from a department head to, you know, you're side by side, and now you're taking a role that you're in charge of the person that you were next to. And does it change that relationship? A little bit, not on a personal level, but on a professional level, it definitely does. And I think my policy would always be to be firm but fair. And I don't have doubts in my ability to manage our staff.
Thank you.
Wasn't that only part one?
Nope, that question just had one part.
Okay. Jim, what do you think is going to be the hardest part of this job for you? This would be kind of a two-part question.
The hardest part, and I have this printed, is an effective city council, city manager relationship. And it's not that I doubt our ability to get along, I think we've gotten along pretty well. But the city council-manager form of government is very effective. It just has to be used the way it should. You know, I saw with previous administrations and during my time here that sometimes that can get strained. There's five bosses, right? With five different opinions. Sometimes, you know, that, are you working for a board? Or are you working for five individuals? We know you're working for a board, and sometimes you're going to have to tell individuals, you know, we're constantly sharing information, we're discussing, but at a certain point, if members are trying to pull you certain ways to look at things a certain way, and often in opposite directions, that can be troublesome. So, you know, I hope that the intent and the goal of the council manager plan, we can operate effectively. I know running operations is not the hard part. It's this relationship between the policymakers, the what is going to get done, and then the administration of how that gets done. And that bridge is often, I think, where most managers that do find some difficulty, I think that's often where it's weak.
So how do you, that's the second part, so how do you, how can you work on that? Or how can we build that relationship between council and you? What ideas or suggestions would you provide us?
This document's really good.
I did, I read it.
It's very good on things that I can do, on things that council can do. I think the biggest thing is everybody understanding their role, being respectful of one another, knowing what each other's roles are. And we all take this very seriously, that's why you're on council, that's why I'm right here. We can't always take ourselves too seriously. We're all on the same team, and communication, I think, is the biggest part of staying on the same team.
Thank you.
Mr. Bocha?
Here's another question that has just one part. What experience have you had in labor contract negotiations?
None. I've assisted with contracts in the private sector a little bit. I have not had experience in union negotiations. Fortunately, we have staff members that have a lot of experience with it. I've read the union contracts, I'm no expert in them, I've only read through them briefly since I've been in the interim role. I know we have contracts negotiations coming this summer. I'm not concerned about how those are going to go. Obviously, in our situation right now, resources are strained across the board, whether it's union, non-union, equipment, whatever the instance, we're not able to necessarily provide everybody what they want. But if they feel we're negotiating in good faith and doing what we can, I think we'll find a resolution. But I'll definitely lean on those that have gone through this before.
Thank you.
Jim, do you feel if we move you forward, do you need additional training in anything? Or are you always going to be someone to seek additional training?
Problem is, I'm one who really thinks for myself. And I do need to seek additional training, in what categories, I'm not sure yet. Is it something that is more general, maybe put on by MML? I've gone to specific trainings already, one up in Marquette, it was an Eagle presentation about water, wastewater. But certainly, I think training's the benefit, it's a huge benefit. It's a way for me to improve. Certainly something I'm open to.
Part two. How many years do you see yourself working for the city?
That's a tough question.
It is.
I only say that because it's with, you look at the city manager industry, it can be two years, it can be four years, five, and it can be 20. It really depends on how I'm doing, how the relationships are with councils, councils change. I can tell you, I intend to live here, I intend to continue, my family's here. I don't have my sights set on leaving Esconaba. I think it could be two to infinity. Of course, it's a new position, so it's hard to say, but it could be as long as the relationship is successful.
Thank you.
I think she's taking notes as well, and it's recorded, so...
The best part is, I'm not going to be able to read any of this anyhow.
Let's see, here's a softball question for you. The city of Esconaba has many partners within the county and central UP. Will you start attending their meetings? EDA, Chamber, we used to have something called the Superior Trade Zone that I believe just fell apart, or might have been absorbed by another group up north. Will you start attending their meetings and provide this council with regular updates?
I definitely can do that. I know I did attend one EDA meeting, I believe we have one coming up. Ed can correct me, but it might be the 25th. Ed can correct me, but it might be the 25th. So, yeah, we, I've attended a meeting out in Hannibal and did provide you an update on that. But for sure, I think those strategic partnerships are important. Sometimes they are formal in terms of meetings. And I guess I'm getting outside your question, but there's a lot of informal relationships too. I know people at these organizations, whether it's the schools, the college, some of these other groups, and that all will provide information that will help me and ultimately relay information to you too.
Thank you.
Kind of follow up with Ron's question too, since besides attending meetings, how do you vision yourself to be involved with the public? In public unity, in being the image for the city?
Good thing is, I think I have somewhat of an image. I know a lot of people here. I went to school here, went to Bay College, I was coaching high school football for a number of years. I'm a member of Kiwanis right now, even though I'm too busy to attend the noon meetings, but I try to go and attend when I can. There's more we can do though. There's a lot of room for improvement. Java with Jim, we can keep the title and bring that back. I think that would be a tremendous opportunity. Someday, if we could ever work in a newsletter, well, we do have a city newsletter, but almost like a personal type of newsletter that I could send, subscribers' updates, or possibly a column, just to get more information out. But yeah, I think there's a lot of room for improvement from where we are right now.
And being present at events that are put on in the city?
Yes.
Okay.
I've made a concerted effort to be present at those. Obviously, can't attend everything.
Correct.
But yeah, I generally try to attend as much as I can.
Thank you.
Just the two of us now? All right, here's a little tougher one. During his tenure, the previous city manager fired several employees for a variety of reasons. What skills do you have that would be beneficial in disciplining, demoting, or even firing an employee?
My temperament, as I mentioned earlier, is a strength. I feel that I'm very fair and I'm not going to overreact and get, put the city at risk for coming down too hard. But at the same time, I have a pretty high expectation of a level of work and whatever the proportionate amount of discipline is. And we have to look at a variety of things. We have to look at our policies, we have to look at our union contracts, we have to look at past practice. So it's not just me. There's a lot of factors to consider, but ultimately, we arrive at a decision and I do think we have to enforce our policies. Otherwise, if you don't, things become a free-for-all and quality of work can start to fade. But I think there's other things we can do too. I know evaluations, we think there's a three-month, six-month, nine-month, and a year, and then you're not really evaluated again. I think evaluations are a really important tool, just to improve those areas of weakness, sometimes address specific issues, and to highlight strengths too. I think we have to acknowledge that and look at the full body of work for an employee and their department. But to answer your question, I think my temperament and judgment will be the biggest strength in that category.
The second part of that question is, can you give us a reason for which you might fire an employee?
There's malfeasance, misfeasance, breaking, you know, gross negligence. If they're a chronic underperformer, and there's a, there's a process, especially with our union employees, there needs to be a documentation trail and there's a process that we have to go through and honor. Non-union employees, of course, are treated a little bit differently. But yeah, if there's malfeasance, misfeasance, gross negligence, if there's a very bad case of, trying to think of the word, disobeying orders, not that I say jump and somebody says how high, but in the right situation, you know, disobeying orders would, could potentially be an instance.
Thank you.
Okay, my turn.
Oh, you got one. All right, let's go.
Just to follow up from Ron's question, you talked about policies. I guess my question is, the policies that are in place right now, have you had the opportunity to look at all the policies out there? And when was the last time all those policies were updated? Because I think there's a couple of them that kind of...
We have a non-union handbook, and that is kind of a wide umbrella, but that has been in the works to be updated for some time. It is a bit outdated. I know Kim has been working on it and it's, I think, at least partially updated. And certainly, room to improve on it. I can't say I've read through it recently. It might have been a year ago, the last time I actually fully read through it. Union contracts dictate a number of procedures too, so that'll be up on the table this summer.
Besides, one of the main priorities is budgets. If you were to put in as a city manager, what would be the top four priorities for the city for you?
Right now, budget's going to be number one. Unfortunately, you know, hopefully someday it's not our number one. But again, responsible use of taxpayer dollars is important. We end up someday with a surplus, then that should return to the taxpayers, right? So becoming more efficient in our operations. But then you have to look at the services we provide too. It's kind of the sustenance of our community. You have fire, police, water, wastewater, our roads, our infrastructure. So we need to deliver at a certain quality, a certain level of quality. So, you know, maybe the number one goal really is the continuity and quality of services. At the end of the day, that's the most important thing. Economic development is a big thing and you have to consider what is the city's role in that? Can we be a cheerleader? Can we try and connect the dots? Can we market, you know, connect funding sources? Look at our regulations, our zoning, make things more conducive, sure. Most important thing is, I think, looking at the long term. If we are financially responsible and we, and you look at the opportunity we have right now, where all municipalities have budget issues, and depending on how they deal with them, they're all going to be a little bit different. Some might gut their departments and that could be damaging in the short and long term. Some might load up on debt and handcuff their communities for many years. Some might raise taxes and chase people out of town or prevent development from coming too. You're seeing it since COVID, where people fleeing states and entering new states. And I think that's very telling of where our new economy is headed, as far as where people prefer to locate and where businesses prefer to locate. But we execute our general fund. Like I said, there's a plan that maybe we can contain this to four years and then be looking pretty good after that. If we execute the, let's service line replacements, which we're off to a very good start as far as gaining funding, and the other infrastructure projects on the wastewater side and streets are going to go along with that as well. So the better we execute that and the more reliable infrastructure and utility services that we have in the future, and if we were disciplined with our budget management, Esconaba could be in a really good place in a couple of years, relative to other communities. You look at the cost of living, you look at Esconaba versus Marquette, everybody points to Marquette, but you look at the house prices, interest rates, their increase in taxes, they're going to be dealing with a lot of the utility issues that we are. And look at 10 years from now, how is each community going to deal with these issues? And I think we have the ability to establish our own competitive advantages, but it's going to take a lot of discipline and hard work and I think we have the people to do it. So, a long way of answering economic development, but to me, that's the most important thing is, not the novel things, it's the 10, 20 years from now, where do we position ourselves and what's in our control? I don't know how many things that's been, if it's three?
I got three.
So what is your immediate priority to attract development to Esconaba?
We had to finish what we started down here, I think, is our immediate. You look at some of the opportunities that maybe have been a little bit underutilized. The city has some revolving loan funds at Northern Initiatives that I don't think we've made a loan out of there in a long time. There is some U-DAG money, some old grant money that probably has to be reused for economic development, and we're taking a look and waiting to get an answer on that. Regulation's a big thing. And you look at, I think there was just an article in the Wall Street Journal about the cost to build something overseas, and then they were looking at the cost to build a factory in different US states. And of course, that's at a state level, but the differences were like unbelievable. How does it cost so much more to build something in one state compared to another state? And a big part of it's regulation and permitting and the process they have to go through and, you know, how much time do their architects and engineers and how many hoops are we going to make people jump through? So the immediate thing we can do is continue to look through our zoning ordinance. RRC, I've always had some mixed feelings on it. I think overall, they are best practices and the idea is to cut red tape and developers then know what to expect when your RRC is certified because it's a process that they've gone through before. So I think there's definitely some value. Doesn't mean I've always agreed with everything that's part of it, but certainly, our zoning ordinance has convoluted. We saw some issues with even the distillery, getting the approval for that. There was a little bit of ambiguity and it was my opinion that it should be approved, but I think one could have made the argument to not approve it based on the zoning ordinance too. And, you know, that shouldn't happen because that is a great project for the downtown. But first and foremost, let's finish down here, let's work with the House of Luddington, get a true downtown district. Everybody talks about how we have the longest Luddington Street. During the day, it's pretty busy. And in a way, parts of it are almost more of a local business district instead of a downtown that people think of today. And hopefully, with what we see happen here, and I know of some projects that may happen as spinoff development, that we end up with a true downtown social-type district with uses in the morning, afternoon, and evening.
Do you have a specific way to attract developers for housing, specifically condos? Seems to be the number one thing that people approach me on anyway.
I think we have to look at our opportunities that have already started. Of course, down here is one. The project over by the hospital with Daryl Myron was going to include quite a bit of housing. I haven't spoken with him yet. I know that the city has to do more for him, in my opinion, that I think we need to get utilities there and available. The planning commission at that time required sidewalks within the development, which I think is maybe a step too far. Certainly a sidewalk along Willow Creek Road, along the public right-of-way, everybody has to do that and he should have to. But is there, are there ways that we can work with him to get that project done, I think is a good start? There's certainly ways to attract external developers, if it's cold calling different development companies. I know I've done it before, they've taken a look and decided not to come here, but I know there is interest and there certainly is a housing need.
I'm going to modify one of my questions on the fly based on something that you were talking about a few minutes ago. You were speaking of taxes, finances, the city budget. I've stated over the last year several times how I feel. 10 years ago, when I was elected to council for the first time, we were told, we were given charts showing the city's pension program being fully funded by 2017, 2018, simply based on the number of retirees that were expected within that timeframe. And yet this year, we've now been told it's kicked out another dozen years at least. Will you, if hired as city manager, vow to solve that problem once and for all?
Yes, I will. And there are a variety of considerations. So the actuarial assumptions back when you initially got on were clearly wrong. The good thing now is, there were maybe 50 years, 40 years before the closure, I mean, the plans closed, but the, before the last retiree might die. And that window isn't as big now. So there's less time sensitivity to some of those factors. But certainly, the actuarial assumptions now are more realistic. I still have my doubts that some of the targets are achievable. Right now, they're telling us that by the end of 2027, we should be through the hump, through the worst of it. I think there's definitely a case that could extend a couple of years if they don't perform as expected. By they, I mean MERS. But part of our budget solution, and it's talking about the ways we can contain this damage, is a couple of years ago, council made a lump sum contribution to MERS. And the idea was that it was going to be there when we need it, or maybe we could kind of pay the plan off a little bit early. Now is when we need it. And that decision many years ago by council was one of the best things, I mean, we should be thanking that council right now. Because we could start applying that, we could start applying that money over the next four years during the projected worst time of this, instead of over the amortization period of each division, and really start leveling this load, I guess you could say. Another idea is that there are some funds that have been underutilized that I think we should also add into the... we should also add into the, the surplus. We should direct them to the MERS surplus that is general fund-specific, to, to really contain the, the general fund stress that we have right now. So, yeah, there's not going to be a guarantee that, that the curve that is before us right now, from the actuaries, will be right. It's, it's going to change. But if we make contributions over these next four years, it, it should be pretty close. And my big question, and ultimately, it would have to be something, you know, a pretty large undertaking, but there is a path, is leaving MERS. I, I think part of the reason we're, where we are today is because of MERS, because of the actuaries that, that they've contracted with, the investment performance. And right now, and, and my background being investments, finance, the most important consideration when you're putting together a portfolio for a client is the risk profile. That is kind of what determines the, it's, it's the first step in portfolio construction. And I can't tell you what the risk is in MERS right now. And that's a problem to me. I, I think there's misleading returns, and I think taking the plan in-house, just as we've done with the Public Safety Plan, provides us a, a bit more flexibility, but at least assurance of what our investments are, what's the risk profile of those investments, and what's the capital market assumptions, and the expected returns associated with those investments. So, that might have to be part of the solution. Is it necessary? Maybe not. Would I feel better? Probably.
Second part of my question. How long do you feel it would take to do what you just said, to finally take care of the problem? And assuming you were offered a contract to be the city manager, would you be willing to have that as a stipulation in that contract?
I would pursue it ultimately. You'd have to get your approval, and there's a process to go through. But I'd be happy to do it. If that was a stipulation, sure.
If you had to guess how long it would take?
Our first step would be contracting with, Foster Swift may have somebody. There's a firm that I have in mind, and there's some specific attorneys that deal with just this type of issue. I don't know if other communities have actually left MERS yet. That window of opportunity hasn't been available for that long. But I, I would think it would take several months to a year, if I was estimating.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
I have just a few more. Some of them have already been asked.
Mr. Bocha, may I refill my coffee?
Certainly. How many times do you estimate you have contacted our state-elected officials in the past year, and regarding which topics?
There hasn't been a whole lot of contact from me to them. Most of my time there in that year has been as the assessor. I know I've had meetings, and I, some of them possibly in confidence, so I, I don't want to divulge too much. But regarding extending infrastructure outside of the city, just had one with, with two state representatives. Had a meeting just recently about possible dark store legislation. And, and that has been an ongoing discussion from possibly over a year ago. I think it was introduced last year, it didn't go through, and now it's been reintroduced, and there will be a resolution before council pretty soon, in, in support of that. But looking at establishing a line of communication, looking for a federal, federal appropriation too. So, I, I haven't had a whole lot of contact, but I am familiar, especially with Mr. McBroom, Senator McBroom. I've worked mostly through their office in the past.
I've got two questions left. One is, can you tell us about one mistake you made in a previous jobs, in, in a previous job, and the steps you took to keep it transparent? And follow-up, I'll give you the follow-up right away. Were you held accountable?
I don't know if I've had a mistake that has required discipline or action. As far as I'm aware, my file's clean, and my first real jobs have been with the city. I know, I, I feel that I've been pretty transparent with all of you. Things happen in the city, and if they are severe, I bring them to your attention. And, and I think you all know that. As far as mistakes that I've made, though, I, I do make them. I know my, might have been my first year as the assessor, I made a mistake running assessment notices, because prior to the notices, I didn't run, there's a certain utility function that you run in the computer system, and I didn't run it. So, did I have to then re-notice, calculate new assessment notices and re-notice? I, I guess I could have tried to, to live with the wrong calculation, or I, I could have not sent out new assessment notices. But I think I was here until nine or 10 o'clock at night, fixing it as soon as I was aware, and getting correct mailings out as soon as possible. So, no, I, I try to be very transparent, and, and deal with mistakes right away.
And my last question is actually something I found in my notes from the last time I interviewed, or previous councils. Interviewed several candidates for the city manager position. And I believe it was asked of each of those candidates. Is there anything you wish to tell us regarding your previous employment or background? And would you be willing to submit to a thorough financial and background check, again, as was done for the last city manager applicants? And if I remember correctly, there were several that we were considering, and the couple candidates did agree to the financial and thorough background check. And I don't recall if we did that for you as city assessor, I don't recall if we did that for the city clerk.
You have a background check. I did do a psychological exam and passed. But, yeah, a lot of that's on file. I, I'd be happy to do anything again, if, if needed. If you wanted some financial disclosure or something, that would be no problem. I, I don't feel that I have anything to hide.
Fair enough. Thank you.
And one last question. How does your wife feel about this? If you go into this position, it's going to be time-demanding. You're pretty much city manager 24/7. There's times you're going to get phone calls at weird times, text messages, things like that. Do you feel it's gonna, how does your wife think about it?
She's very supportive. I definitely wouldn't be able to take something like this on without her. And to a certain extent, it's something that, when we start having children, I, I'm not going to miss things. It is too important to me. But I don't think that's unreasonable either, to say, I want to be at my kids' events. We have a honeymoon scheduled, it's been scheduled from long before any of this happened. And that's going to be two weeks in August, which, I guess is a long time to be away. I, I wouldn't have, you know, planned a two-week getaway, knowing of this, but we still will need time in the future to get away, if it's a week. Obviously, if I was gone for a week, it would be structured, you would know, there would be somebody at the city that would assume decision-making while I was gone. And if it rose to a certain level, of course, they would call me, and, and we would get it dealt with appropriately. But she's very supportive, and I'm thankful for that.
Thank you.
I would suggest we give him an opportunity to make a closing statement, if he so chooses.
Are we going to ask more questions after he makes a closing statement?
I'm done.
I'm just making sure. This is what the space and the pauses for.
No.
So the closing statements are for closing. Mr. Mayor, did you have any questions at the last?
I do not. Thank you for your time, thank you for answering all the questions as thoroughly, I believe, as you can. I would like to note that you do have the full support of the Economic Development Alliance. There was a letter of support emailed to all council members, and I find that that helps to answer one of these up here, page two. Yeah, we attend various meetings, things like that, you've already been involved in things like that, so you do have the support of entities outside of the direct city. And I think that's important, and you've already engaged and developed relationships with them. So that's a good start. That's my comment.
And it, so that my council, or my letter of interest sent to council, we're all standing on the shoulders of previous councils and previous city employees, with a lot of respect. I'm very grateful to work for the city, to have worked for the city, to continue to work for the city, to have the chance to serve as the interim. I, I don't take this, this position lightly, and I don't take the position of the assessor lightly. I, I'm quite a serious person. So, there is, I, there is quite a bit of support behind me, that a lot of people have reached out, whether it's a city employee, or, or city employees, partners of the city, just community members. I feel that there's a, a lot of people that, that support me, and would support your decision as well. But if you ever have additional questions for me, or comments, I, I'm generally pretty available, and I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bocha.
I'd like to suggest that we wait until tomorrow at our regular meeting to discuss...
You would like to address the outcome of this meeting?
Yes.
Under the unfinished business item at tomorrow's meeting?
Sure. I think we'll have a, a lot more members of the public here, the media, obviously.
I think it's still on the agenda still, isn't it? Because we didn't finish it.
It is.
Okay.
Is council comfortable with that?
I'm good with that.
Mr. McNeil, are you comfortable with that?
That's, do you, do you expect to possibly render a decision tomorrow, or is it a discussion, or?
Well, I would hope we'd have some discussion, and then make a decision.
I would recommend that we come to a decision tomorrow. If, if we're going to postpone it for a day, I would recommend we come back prepared to make a decision tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Agreed.
So we make it tonight? Why do we got to wait?
Well, like I said, there'd be more members of the public, the media.
I think it just gives us the day to think about everything that we talked about, the responses, and then by tomorrow, we can openly discuss and make a decision.
Or I'll make a motion that we force the, or no?
What's that?
Is the floor still open?
It's open.
Well, then I'll make the motion tonight. I'm going to make a motion that we hire Jim as a, in terms, from interim city manager to city manager, contingent upon getting a contract, and I don't know how that's going to go, so that we need to have that discussion.
I'll second that.
Is there, there's no contract, right? Do you have a contract now for interim city manager?
No. No.
So that's my question, is, that's my concern, is that we have to have some type of contract.
Correct. I would recommend that we have our HR department work out a contract. I believe we have people here in-house that are capable of drafting up something that will align with our city charter, and present that for us. And that does not have to be prepared by tomorrow, we certainly don't want to rush a contract.
No, no. We also have the contract, the, the contract committee prepared.
Do. It has been brought to my attention that that one does not align with the city charter.
Um, yeah, I'm not saying it would have to be exactly that, but it's a definite excellent starting point.
I believe it can be used as a basis, correct?
So then, who would determine? I understand also that there's parts of that contract that don't follow the city charter.
Correct, that has been stated, so...
So I'm, I'm, you know, questioning whether we, why we need to start with that. I think that our employees are capable of coming up with something, especially when it's going to be aligned with two jobs, with the assessor. I'm not sure that, you know, we should start with something that is not acceptable the way it is. I think we should start fresh for something.
And that is something that we can continue to discuss tomorrow, under, under the unfinished business item. The motion on the floor right now by Mr. Floth is whether or not to hire Mr. McNeil outright this evening.
We're still in discussion?
Correct.
I will say it again, I do believe in the interest of transparency, we need to wait until tomorrow night's meeting.
I will have to concur. I think it's very relevant that we had the interview today, we take the information, settle it in our heads, think about it, and tomorrow, in a city council open meeting, we have the public, we have everything here publicly to officially, if we choose to move forward, announce the city managers, our decision on city manager. It's a good thing for the public transparency, it's a good thing for the public to see openly.
So, in response to that, you know, this meeting is being televised, so, you know, it is public and it is recorded. And tomorrow night, we could just announce that we came to the conclusion of hiring Mr. McNeil, and so then that would be transparency. We could announce it, and, you know, make a big deal of it, because that's, that was our decision. So that's the other way to look at it.
But there will be some social media, whatever you want to call them, that will break the news, what have you, before council has a chance to discuss it.
And a lot of people didn't even know tonight was really televised. It was kind of a last-minute day, and I think people already know, city council's televised tomorrow, they're going to be watching. And I think you're going to have more viewership there. So I just, I just don't think, we only have till tomorrow. I mean, that's just, it's tomorrow, it's not next week, it's not two weeks from now, we're not pushing it out.
Twenty-four hours.
So...
I do believe council expressed the interest in completing this tomorrow, before we had a motion. Council seemed to be in agreement on their decision. The candidate did also agree to that. I'm inclined to follow with that initial decision, based on Mr. Bocha's recommendation.
Would you care to force the vote, Mr. Floth? No, I'll rescind it. I mean, I already know what the numbers are, right?
Very well. Thank you. Motion rescinded.
Who rescinded their motion?
I did, myself.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait, wait.
Support?
We have to do the...
Oh, the announcements and all that good stuff.
Really quick. Sorry. I don't believe we're doing appointments this evening. We'll do appointments tomorrow. Do we have board commission committee reports?
I just have that one, the Solid Waste Authority Board. And I don't know how they've done it in the past, but there's, the city of Esquinaba now has two seats on that board. They rotate those two seats. I'm on it. I'm assuming that somebody else would be on from this board to sit on that.
Not from this board.
It's going to be addressed tomorrow at the meeting also. I discussed it with Wendy Tavola. Historically, I believe, this was before my time, they alternate between Gladstone and Esquinaba.
Correct.
So this is Esquinaba's turn. So Wendy, as part of the administration from DPW, will now be a part of that.
Okay, that helps me because I didn't understand all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Turn of public comment at this time. Hearing none. Further announcements at this time. We do still have a motion on the floor from Mr. Duport.
Motion to adjourn.
Support?